Welcome to the 2021 Concord Ward Five City Council Debate. My name is Tony Shinella. I'm the editor of Concord, New Hampshire Patch, a news and community website here in Concord, which has been around for over 10 years. These debates are sponsored by Patch as well as Concord TV. We're in the Concord TV studios right now, as well as WKXL Concord News Radio, which will be broadcasting clips from the debate on their radio station before the election on November 2nd. Before we get to introductions, just want to thank Concord TV as well as WKXL for broadcasting this important information before Election Day. You can also go to yourconcordtv.org or the Voters Guide on the Concord, New Hampshire Patch website for a link to this video if you miss any of it, as well as stories and other election information. We have two candidates on the ballot in Ward Five, and I'm lucky because I live in Ward Five, so I get to figure out who to vote for. We have two candidates. Stacy Brown is here and Mark Cohen. I want to thank you both for agreeing to participate today. They're going to be given two-minute opening statements and two-minute closing statements, and then in between, we'll ask questions concerning everything that goes on at the city council and what they'll be doing if they win during the next two years. So, Mark, ladies first?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay. Stacy, two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Tony, I'd like to thank you, Concord Patch. I'd like to thank Concord TV and my competitor, Mark Cohen, for giving me this opportunity because I have never done politics before. So, I really appreciate this opportunity to get my name out there. My name is Stacy Brown, and I am a 12-year resident of Concord. I'm an Army veteran, and I'm a mother of two. I work for the Concord Public Library, and I am the Ward Five Representative for Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Some of my background: I grew up in New Hampshire. I graduated from Keene State College. I taught English for two years, then I joined the Army, where I learned a foreign language and I traveled extensively in service of our country. I was honorably discharged, but I was called back into the military following the 9/11 terrorist attacks. Following my military service, I worked for the federal government as an intelligence officer, and later joined the NYPD as an intelligence analyst. As we grew our family, we learned firsthand about the expenses of childcare. And like many women, I put my career on hold to focus on the full-time care of our children. We moved our family back to my home state of New Hampshire, where we discovered and fell in love with Concord's vibrant downtown, tree-lined parks, and neighborhood communities. As a stay-at-home mom, I remained active in the community by creating and promoting free or low-cost events for students at Krista McCall of School and as a board member for the Concord Public Library -- for the, I'm sorry, for the Concord Police -- excuse me, for the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. I also worked extensively with the Concord Police Department to further expand their bike rodeo. My experiences drive my commitments. I want to see equitable access to libraries and green space. I want to see safe roads for bikes, strollers, and wheelchairs that will connect our community members to city resources. I want to maintain a high level of public safety, supporting our first responders. I want to take advantage of the natural resources available to us to build our community and develop our economy, including turning the riverfront into a destination location. I want to do everything we can to combat the climate crisis, to include restoring our tree cover, installing solar panels on municipal spaces, and creating charging stations for electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you for your service. Mark?
Thank you, Tony. Hi, I'm Mark Cohen. I'm a 50-year resident of Concord. I went to high school in Tulsa, Oklahoma, joined the Coast Guard right out of high school in 1967, which was very fortunate at that time in our history. Spent four years in the Coast Guard. I met my wife, Tracy Branch, from Concord while I was in the service. And when we got out, when I got out of the service, we got married, and I attended New Hampshire College. And after attending, before I went to New Hampshire College, I was explaining to Tracy that Oklahoma's got some great state universities that I plan to attend. And she said, "Well, be sure to write," because she's not going out there. And she asked me, "What's wrong with Concord?" And I said, "Well, absolutely nothing. It's a great place." And then she said, "Well, then, why would we want to go back to Oklahoma?" And I said, "I don't think we will." And that was the best decision I made besides marrying Tracy. And we had, we have two daughters, Jane and Georgia, that we raised. Tracy was a at-home mother, and I worked originally with Swenson Granite. Then I worked for an industrial supply company that was based out of Chicago. Then in 1994, I went to work for Page Belting Company, which is a leather manufacturer in Concord. And in 2000, I became, actually, '98, I became president of the company, been president since. During this time in Concord, the thing that just, what I really appreciated was the act of participation of all the citizens in Concord at all levels, in city government and city volunteerism. It was, it's very dynamic, very active. And so, I had a taste of that at a very early time in my life, being involved in some projects, and which carried over my whole 50 years here, being involved with a lot of art projects like the Capital Center for the Arts, being on the original board and the co-chair of the building committee. Red River Theater, First Night, New Hampshire, that was very successful for many years. I was on the board of that. And with kids, you get involved in sports. And so, my two daughters played softball, and I helped originate and push the Gary Dillon Field, the first girl softball field in Concord. But been continually active in the chamber, other functions. When I first ran, so in 2006, I ended up running for the city council at large and won that election.
Thank you, Mark. Let me go with a question for you first. You know, back in August 2019, when you decided not to run for your election after serving on the board for about 13 years, and you, as you said, in 2006, you were elected in a special election. You told me at the time that it was the opportunity for other people to run and to move the city into the future. So, what changed during the last two years that made you decide to run again?
Well, I thought, I thought some very good people did win, run and win in the election. I had an opportunity in talking to Tracy, and I'm sure it didn't have anything to do with me just being home a lot. But she said, "You know, you really missed it. You were very active. You were very successful at it, being on the council and getting projects done. And if you miss it, you should have an opportunity." And so, when Rob Warner decided not to run, she said, "You know, take an opportunity to run in Ward Five and get back onto it." So, I'm pretty excited about doing this.
Cool. Stacy, during the past two years, you've had some experience dealing with the council, including trying to change the city's chicken ordinance.
Right.
And while watching that entire situation, I have to admit, I was hoping to be able to use the headline, "What the Cluck?", and I never got the opportunity to do that.
Right.
But in some, maybe still at some point. But was that one of your main motivations for running?
No, actually, that was my daughter's moti, that was my daughter's project. And it started, it was, she was nine years old, and we were looking at our old, you know, playhouse in the backyard. And we said, "Oh, that would be a perfect chicken coop." And she said, "Great, I want chickens." And I said, "Well, you have to change the ordinance." And I thought, "This is perfect to get her to be more involved." And it was great because she started, she wrote a letter to Rob Warner, age nine, and it was just, she kind of tracked the process. And she would ask me every day, "Mom, what's going down? What's happening next?" It went to the planning board. She presented in front of the planning board. And it was really encouraging and a wonderful experience for her. However, it was two years, and it was really long. And when we were in the pandemic, and there's not much going on, and you have a, you know, nine, 10, asking you, "Mom, what's happening next? What do we need to do to move this process along so I can get my chickens?" She was naming the chickens before we. So, I said, "Okay, well, let's, let's find out." We would talk to different counselors, and I think it was Counselor Gail Matzos who said, "Well, you know, we're going to be speaking for the whole city, so talked, we need to make sure that the whole city approves of this." So, we knocked on doors in five wards. And it was exciting to see her do this. She presented at the safety board. She presented at city councils. She wrote a letter to the editor. She talked, she made presentations at her school. So, that was her project. I talked about chickens for two years because I, you know, would drive her to different houses. I would, you know, bring her to the city council, set her up on the Zoom call. But I found that I really enjoyed watching and listening and paying attention to the committees. And I thought after, you know, when it didn't pass, I was like, "Well, I would like to be more involved. I like watching these things." And when I saw that Rob Warner was stepping down, I thought, "Okay, what's my excuse? My kids are more active and, you know, they don't need me as much as they did when they were younger, and I enjoy this, and I want to give back to my community."
Thank you. Stacy, I'm going to stay with you, and then we'll go to Mark also. The same question to both of you. The city council historically attempted to keep tax increases low, under 3%, while also, you know, tending to all of the major services that everybody counts on, such as police and fire, roads, construction, other programs, things like that. This year, the budget was around $109 million. What, if any, concerns do you have about the current budget or future budgets here in the city in the next two years?
So, I would like to really go through and look at the budget and make sure that it matches our values, because I feel like we are shortchanging families. I feel like there could be more development towards spaces for building community. I really want to develop the river. I've been here 12 years, and there are plenty of other towns and states that take advantage of a natural resource like that. And I really want to see where we can make inroads with that. So, I want to examine the budget in that sense.
Mark, same question to you.
Well, can I back up for the chicken?
Sure.
All right.
Well, you know, you're going to take your time.
That's the greatest thing about Concord, I think, living in this community, is that you can have a young girl or young woman go and testify and petition the city for a change of ordinance and the passion to do that. And serving on the city council, one of the things that I can guarantee, if you're on or if I'm back or anybody serving, that you're going to spend so much time talking about either chickens or a stop sign or something that's, or a tree that's maybe, it'll take literally months or years. But sometimes, there's a multimillion-dollar project, it just blows right through. It's just amazing, the amount of time that it takes to do some of these things. But that's what I enjoy, and that's what I think is great about this city, is that everyone can participate, and they do get a chance to participate. As far as going forward and the budget, right, and what we see, one of, a couple of things is, to get back to the river, I've been a proponent and supporter of the river. I don't know how many surets we've had in the last 25 years of doing that. The biggest problem we have is that you had two things going on. You had a railroad, and you also have an interstate highway that's between downtown and the river. And to get the vision out, that you have to work with these other entities, and it's can be a bear. It is, all the time, and I'm sure you've seen that, working with the state even, with the property they own. But what I thought was great was, two years ago, that was, I'm not saying it was my only suggestion, but some other people talked about it. I certainly support it, was just cutting trees down between the river and Interstate 93, so people would, their eyes would look at the Merrimack River and Manchester Street, not Manchester, but Loudon Road Bridge versus the backside of the shopping center. But going forward for taxes, I mean, since 2006, I was on the FPAC, our Physical Policy Committee, and we've really been very strong and serious about the spending and how we do it. What I see going forward, the big money is going to be in wages, benefits, and retirement fund that's on the state, and that's going to be huge.
Mark, I'm going to stick with you for this next one, and then we'll go to Stacy afterwards. In the last 18 months, there's been a lot of discussion about defunding or disbanding the police various ways. Some people say, you know, we should be spending more money on social programs. There was actually one of the candidates who had remarked during the special election about disbanding. About 93% of the $15 million police budget as personnel, meaning any, you know, even more than a hangnail cut to the budget would lead to diminished number of officers in the field who serve the community, and we all know all of the work that they do. Give me, you know, what you're, where you come down on that issue.
Well, to me, it's very, for me, it's very simple. One of the qualities and the reason why people like Concord is because it has very low crime, and it has a very good police department that services the community well. The issue is not defund, or the police are getting too much money. It's on the opposite side, of mental health issues and homeless and everything else. That's where the funding needs to be, and that people, if they realize that, they got to know that they got to spend money towards it, increase taxes to pay for that, but not to defund departments, to rob them of the quality of work they do to fund something else, because then you're going to end up with, it's going to be bad on both sides. Neither one's going to win. So, defunding the police was, I thought, when I first heard that nationally and everything else, I said, "There's someone, they're not thinking this thing through." And what they're trying to achieve has nothing to do with the funding of the police. It has to do with training and personnel issues and hiring the correct people. And the last thing, real quick, is that Concord, for years, has been very, very good about hiring personnel. They're very particular about the personnel they hire for the police and fire department.
Real quick, before I go to Stacy, yes or no, should the police officers have body cams?
Sure.
Okay.
So, we agree. I think, at full disclosure, my husband is a detective for the Concord PD. Before we came to Concord, I worked for the NYPD, and the caliber of the officers at Concord PD is phenomenal. They do incredible work, and I think, just as Mark said, I think it's, you know, additional training and mental health, but they are doing some incredible things. I was just talking to Lieutenant John Thomas, I believe it is at the ACERT program, and that's where they're actually, any child, adverse childhood experience involving law enforcement's or trauma, there's a team that goes out, and they are, there's one police officer, a social services person, and they will connect with that family again after the fact and provide them the resources. And Lieutenant Thomas was telling me how he's received calls from people who formerly had, you know, spoken out against the police and said, "Look, I'm sorry. What you guys did was wonderful, and I really appreciated that." And I think that's the kind of policing that we can really appreciate and enjoy in Concord.
And real quick on the body cams.
Yes, I think so, too.
My name is Tony Shinella, and this is the 2021 Ward Five City Council Debate with Stacy Brown and Mark Cohen. I have to agree with you. Your husband is a very great detective, and I've seen a lot of his work during the past nine and almost nine and a half years. He's done some amazing work.
I taught him everything he knows.
Okay, there we go. Is, real quick, is your position with the Library Foundation Board, is that a paid position?
It is a paid position.
Okay. So, so with your husband on the police department and you on the library board, that's like--
No, I just want to correct you. I'm on the Library Foundation.
Okay.
The Foundation is a separate entity from the library.
Okay.
The Library Foundation provides funding for the library programs and other groups in support of the library's mission.
Okay. So, what I want to get at is, you're going to be, if you get elected, you know, 20% of the city's budget process is police and the library.
I would recuse myself from anything that I could personally benefit from.
Okay. And that, so that would be, that could be healthcare cost negotiations, that could be--
Yeah, I would talk with this, with the, you know, city attorney to make sure--
So, you've already kind of thought about that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. There are two lobbyists currently on the city council, and so, I actually talked to Counselor Grady Sexton about what is done when there is a conflict of interest, and she said that counselors personally recuse themselves.
Okay. Mark, the council recently, I guess it happened when I was not working for Patch, but I guess it dissolved the Ethics Committee, which was created in 2011, or the, didn't staff, there were changes with the elections, the Ethics Committee, excuse me. There were a few cases brought before the committee, which seemed to have some legitimacy, but they didn't really go anywhere, and nobody kind of was kicked out of office, if you will. There were, there was an issue that was raised against you concerning a family member who was a lobbyist, and you were voting on the Keno Garden issue.
Actually--
And you're, you had a family member, and you and I had discussed it, and you said how proud you were of that family member and who worked for a firm that was involved with the Keno Garden program. Do you think that the Ethics Committee issue is a concern, not having it in any way?
I, as currently, I'd say, I don't have a concern with it.
Yep.
I think there's a reason why we dropped, I'm trying to remember what happened at that time for that. But to get back to when my daughter, Jane Tewksbury, was brought up in this, it was out of left field for me, because what Jane's position was, was an administrative accountant.
Right.
I mean, she's not a lobbyist. She's not a registered lobbyist or anything else. And so, so I looked back on it, and said, "Well, I guess," you know, because she works in the building and works in the office, that there's a potential conflict of interest with me, but, you know, that's a big stretch at the time.
Right. So-- Well, and there was a complaint, you know?
Oh, yeah.
There was a mention of it, but--
There's been, over the years, over the 13 years I've been on, there have been complaints, and it would go to, looked at through the city solicitor and other people, I mean, other committees or whatever's involved. And I guess, again, that's one of the things I'm really proud about, the council, is that it's, it's really, the issues that they have, they really try to be very sensitive of any conflict of interest. All of them are like that, all are like that.
So, no concern about dissolution of the committee?
No.
Real quick, I'm going to allow you to say it. Do you have any, do you have any thoughts about the--
You know what? This is news to me and something I'm happy to look into.
Okay, great. This one goes to Stacy, and then we'll go to Mark. I want to shift to housing for a second. You know, everybody knows what's going on with housing in the city. There's a myriad of problems, low vacancy rate, new people moving in or being relocated during the last 20 years, which, at the same time, we've had the low vacancy rate on top of that, limited building permits. A lot of the permits are only single-family, high-end homes, of single-family construction. And then, at the same time, there's, there are very limited amount of lots where you could do any type of building. And the city's also, at the same time, purchasing conservation easements on areas that could have more housing. What should the city council do, the city council do about housing policy?
Well, that is a very complex question, and I currently am not in the position of city councilor where I would be reaching out to different people. I did attend a chamber event that was exactly on this issue, which was on housing and childcare, because there is a concern. We need to provide for childcare. We need to have housing. There are, Matt Walsh went through a whole host of units that are going to be available in Concord, but this is something that I would want to talk to more people before I make a definitive statement on.
Okay. Mark?
Well, what's happened in the last 15 years, there's been a lot of housing built for low and moderate-income families in Concord. I mean, you've got Empty Menino Place on Theater Street, just recently, again, up at the Tannery in Pinnacook, and Catch is just completing another project on Fisherville Road. Again, the ironic part about it, anytime any of this is brought up, there's a backlash of some citizens that don't want it, because they're saying, "What you're going to do is you're going to increase the population of the schools, traffic, everything else," and so, they don't want it. But the, the reality of living in New England is not an inexpensive place to live. I mean, that's, and it's been like that at least for 80 years. The good news about Concord is it's a very attractive place to move to and raise a family, and therefore, a lot of people like this, and they look at the, to move here, and the housing market, especially in the last eight months, which is ridiculous, is going up. Then, then we have the whole thing about, especially growing up in the Southwest and everything else, is, land's cheap out there, and there's sprawl, and you can go out. And in New England, in Concord, New Hampshire, and places, the citizens really don't want to see a sprawl. And so, that's why the, they formed the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission is very active in acquiring property. There's a lot of thoughtful planning going in through our planning department about how housing's done, and you do all that, and you're increasing the cost of housing 20, 25%. If you want to reduce the cost of a house, then you eliminate all the codes and back, you know, and you could have seven houses on a half-acre lot. That's going to make those houses cheaper. But, so, right now, the citizens of Concord, I don't see them wanting to have the city change in that way. And so, you see more, more inexpensive houses outside of Concord in the, you know, the Boskens and Loudon and stuff like that. But, no, it's not, it's not easy, but the reality is, it's, this is not upstate New York or Mississippi, where you can buy a house for $30,000. There's a reason why people want to live here.
Mark, I want to stay with you. One of the things that city officials have tried to do is to focus on more high-end apartments downtown, populate the downtown area with people who will eat out often, things like that. The Employment Security Building was just, was just sold, it will be market-rate housing there. The Vegas Block Apartments was redone with a tax break for a provision to make sure that it was market-rate housing. At the same time, there's people in the community who want more affordable housing and who say, you know, there needs to be more of those units, even though a lot of them are already downtown now. Where do you come out from, from that, and you were on the council during that time, where the, where the market rate strategy is? What do you think about it now? And I'll come to Stacy--
It's got to be a mix. It can't be all one or the other. And as far as high-end condos in Concord, I mean, really high-end, where they're talking about a half a million dollars more, it's not that many of them. A lot of them are being, not a lot, there are some being, large homes being converted in Ward Five, where we live, into condos that are fairly high-end. But the Employment Security Building, part of it is that you want to have a mix of economic people in an area, and especially downtown. So, if you look at how many subsidized apartments and buildings are in downtown Concord, there's, I mean, there's hundreds of apartments, hundreds. And, you know, the Kennedy apartment next to--
Crutchfield Building. There's, there's actually--
Yeah. And so, I got no problem with someone proposing to build condos that are half a million dollars more. Good for them, good for whoever can read, and it's good for our taxes.
Stacy, do you have any, have any thoughts about market rate?
You know, I think, as Mark said, that I think it does take a mix. But I also want to make sure that when there is a TIF, the tax increment financing, that it, it isn't pulling away from the community. I know there is some, you know, complaints and concerns that, you know, it's taking away from our schools when that money is being funneled back into that building. And I also think that, you know, in the concern about families and families moving in, and that's going to increase childcare, during this meeting today, they talked about for every unit, it's .17 children when units are added. So, I think we can look at childcare, and I would like to see the city of Concord look at childcare and develop it as a business, you know, and so that family members are drawn to Concord because they are not paying. There was one person at today's meeting who paid $365 a week for infant care. So, we are not going to have the workforce in Concord if we can't also come up with some solutions for the childcare.
I want to, one more question about housing, and then we can move on, and this one, if you have any quick thoughts on this. Last year, during the Black Lives Matter rallies and marches, there was some concern raised by a number of the activists about the segregation of our populations here in the city. And in fact, Leah Willingham, the reporter, and I did a conversation with Franklin Bass in the studio, and Franklin Bass, who lives in Manchester, said, "You know, one of the nice things about Concord is that populations aren't really segregated." And Leah and I both looked at him and said, "What are you talking about? You know, the city really is segregated." And unlike past immigrants, including my own family, you know, which settled here 117 years ago in the North End, a lot of those families are placed in one section of the city and not in your ward. Do you have any concerns about this, Stacy? And what can be done--
Yes.
Not necessarily to build apartment buildings on Auburn Street, but to make sure that there are more integrated populations.
Thank you for asking that, because I do feel like the city is segregated. And, and I noticed this during the pandemic especially, when the library up on the Heights was closed, and if you did not have a computer, you had no access to the library at all. And I talked, when my conversations with the chief, he said, "You know, it's just not safe for kids to travel down Loudon Road to get to the main branch." One of the things I want to see, I want to see safe roads for bikes, strollers, and wheelchairs. That's how we can connect our communities, and we want our community members to have access to these resources. I feel that there should be equitable access to the libraries, to the green space. I would like to see the river developed, because I can see that as being a draw for all communities, different communities, to come together. One of the things that I'd like to see is, I'd like to see community gardens along the Merrimack River. And, you know, that would be beautiful to see as you're driving on the highway. But I do feel that we can and we should be doing more towards equitable, equitable access in our community.
Interesting question. Off the hip, I'm looking at this and saying, "Why are refugees and new Americans living in certain areas of Concord? Because are they being segregated on purpose?" And my answer is, my, is no, not at all. Where they're going is where the housing's affordable. It has nothing, it's an economic thing. It's not, it's not a segregationist point of view.
If-- I should, I should say, let me just interrupt real quick, and I'll give you a little bit more time. That was the reaction by the activists. I found it, I found that--
Yeah.
That 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 was what they believed, that they used the word, they actually used a word I won't use, but they brought the issue of segregation.
And and so if you if you look at the other low-income housing that's available in Concord in other areas, and again, Ward Five, it is. It's probably the least amount of all the wards. I knew this at one time, but so is it? So if you had low-income housing in other parts of the city, and new Americans or refugees were not allowed to rent or live there, then I'd say absolutely there's segregation going on, but it's an economic issue. And and you go back even culturally, and and I know this is not too much of it, but you go back, like you said, Tony, with your family. But when the Armenian genocide happened at the turn of the 20th century, 19, late 1800s, that the community of Armenians lived in the Fosterville North End area of Concord, because they had similar social connections and everything else in families. But so I guess I I'm very sensitive to the word about segregation and segregationists. I grew up in the 50s, 60s, 70s with Martin Luther King as an idol, Martin Luther King Jr. as an idol. And my whole life, my family and myself taught this, is that that we look at people as human beings and not not their color or ethnic religion or anything else. And so it's just amazing to hear this word segregationist come up recently.
I'd just like to add, you know, we come from a very privileged background. We are both white. And we're in Ward Five, which has really got a lot of trees and green space. But when you look at a map of Concord and you look at the heat zones, primarily the heat zones are where there are black and brown families. And that is because there is lower-cost housing, there are apartment buildings. But I think we have to recognize what we have, the benefits we have. I can walk to the library, which is amazing. For somebody who's up on the Heights, who doesn't have access, easy access, maybe doesn't have a vehicle, it's a two-mile walk. And you you remember when the kids were little, you're bringing stacks of picture books home. This is not gonna happen for somebody who's living up on the Heights. So we really need to have equitable access to libraries, because that equals literate citizens. And so we need safe roads for people to come to access those resources. We don't have it currently.
I'm I'm gonna give you a real quick reply, and then I want to-
Yeah, I just, I, so the the library branch on on the Heights is not open?
During the pandemic, it wasn't open. The only way you could get books was online. Yes.
But is it open now?
It is open for two days, and the hours are not conducive to somebody who's working.
So what happens is if we want to expand that-
Yes.
Then we can do it. We have the facility there to do it.
Yes, we need to.
So it's not, it's not, that's fine.
Yeah.
Then do it. Don't sit there, I shouldn't say don't sit there, but don't say that we're purposely keeping people from access to a facility.
And we, I'm gonna stop you there. This is this is good, but and but we don't want this to become the time the Pennacook Library was proposed to be closed, and there were hundreds of people that came to the city council to-
I just want to say that it's good to recognize the differences and to make changes when we see them differences.
That's how you get stuff done.
Exactly.
Thank you. Many residents enjoy and appreciate the Beaver Meadow Golf Course. At the same time, there have been a number of financial issues. I know that you've served on the on the committee, I believe, at one time. And I know you play. Do you play golf, by the way?
I do not.
Okay. While officials have have worked to diversify the offerings of the course, bringing in snow, snow paths and other things, and as well as the automated video screens and things like that. In the capital improvement program, there's a $6.3 million upcoming expenses for the course, including a new $4 million clubhouse. Yet only about $600,000 is gonna be contributed by the course itself, meaning tens of millions of us in Concord who don't play golf are gonna be funding the bill for that building. Is this the best use of taxpayers' money, Mark?
Well, I, by your form of statement right then, I know you're really into this thing of a- Couple of things was, the golf course was in, it used to be a very profitable center and surplus to the city. Then about 10 years ago, it started to go downhill and for, mostly because of lack of maintenance and upkeep. And so it was aspiring where it went down. And so, yes, I was on the advisory committee and being on a council, and one of the things we did is we reorganized the the department, the golf course itself, and got it back into under David Gill in Parks and Rec, because it was under Public Services. And they didn't really manage it, I felt, that that well. And so the last two years, and one of the nice things happened is, if you want to call it that, with the pandemic. Last year, there was just a ton of people playing golf. This year, it's even increased more. It's back in the black. It's generating a couple hundred thousand dollars. What we're talking about is a place setter in the CIP out several years that they, when when the city does budgets, they say, okay, we're gonna put $4 million out in 2028 for our new building. And so but what we're doing currently, three months ago, the mayor and the and the council appointed an ad hoc committee to look at the building. And I'm serving on that. And so what we're looking at is we're analyzing the building. Does it, does it need to be, it does need to be fixed. Do we repair it? Do we add on to it? Do we tear it down, build a new one? We don't know yet. And so that's the phase we're at right now. And the other multi-million dollars of of the golf course, it's not a multi-million dollars, but of upgrading, upkeeping the course the way it should have been 25 years ago. And it's generating, it's in the black now and generating, and so we're really looking well. But it's not like there's $4 million out there to spend. You know, the committee may come back and say, everything's fine.
Right. And before I move to Stacy, just gonna take 15 seconds and explain CIP, because it's kind of insider baseball. So I mean, it is, when I didn't, I wasn't insinuating or didn't mean to insinuate there was $4 million, but CIP is the chip. The CIP is a chip, well, the capital improvement program is a chip-away program, and most people don't know that, you know, it's, you set aside money. You know, they're still putting money toward Langley Parkway, and it's still not built. And so, I mean, money gets set aside every year.
Not with the the golf course building. They're not putting away money for $4 million on that. Because I think what they're gonna do-
I think I was under the understanding when I looked at the, when I looked at the forums, that they were starting, they were going to start contributing money to the CIP program.
But I'm sure what they're waiting for is a report to come back and say, what do you recommend? Because they're not gonna throw money at something without a an understanding-
But they will start saving for it now, though. I think that that's the-
Oh, it's since-
Right.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. Stacy, do you have any thoughts about the?
Um, I don't play golf. I was stationed in Augusta, which The Masters is a very big golf community. You have to have money, you know, or to be able to afford golf clubs. And I've talked to another mother of children who said that, you know, the golf for kids was just really too expensive. I would like to see the city putting money towards those events that are free or low-cost, that that somebody isn't required to have a hundreds of dollars worth of equipment in order to partake. Something like a River Walk, or this is pie in the sky, of course. That's what I, ultimate goal. But, you know, I know there was a talk about lights at Keach Park. I know up at Keach Park, they play soccer, and that's a great opportunity for people to mingle and talk. They come from different backgrounds. I would like to see money go towards those projects that more of the community can benefit from.
Mark, I want to, I want to, oh, okay, go ahead.
All right. I just want, I was talking to a lady years ago about how expensive golf is, and she's a biker. She's got a bicycle. And I said, yeah, I'm an adult. I bought my bags and everything clubs for around $650. How much did you pay for your bike? And she said, oh, $2,500 bucks. I said, oh.
Right.
And she, then she's saying, well, what else do you have? Well, I got a helmet and I got all this stuff. So it's all relevant to what you want to do, and and there's people that walk all the time, and so all they're doing is buying tennis shoes. The other thing about Beaver Meadow is that it generates over a million dollars a year in revenue. So it's not a million-dollar-a-year expense, you know, it's 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 not, it pays for 90, 95% now. It's it's surplus. So it's great, and I'm all for River Walks and everything else, and even the lights, but there's no revenue coming back from that. And so what what happens is every year, we're paying for the maintenance, upkeep, and the construction of all that, and I'm I'm for it. But people gotta, I mean, realize that's what they're doing. Got no problem.
Okay, I want to let Stacy give you-
So I do want to, I know you talked about the bike. I work with the Concord PD on their bike rodeo. And what they do is they teach bike safety skills to kids. They were giving out free helmets and free bikes. And I participate in the bike swap, so I got the sweet bike used for 100 bucks. So it's really, you know, we have to have the infrastructure so that people can bike safely, they can walk safely without worrying about traffic.
I want to, I want to stay with the golf course, or just a quick question. And, you know, there's 169 acres there, Mark, and it's surrounded by homes. Many of them are different. You know, they have homeowners associations. You've got the school there, and you have other single-family homes as well. Why can't we shrink the golf course to, say, nine holes and sell off part of it to a developer and have that finance a new building?
Then we could do the same thing with our conservation easement property, too. We can. I mean, that's a question. That's a very good question. The number-one problem is that 1968, when the golf course was expanded, it got funding from the federal government. And when that money was put into the golf course expansion, it says now forever, it can only be used for-
For the entire lot?
For everybody, yeah.
Okay.
So that's why. But it's a great question. Several years ago, that's what we looked at, saying, you know, the course isn't doing that well, and what if you do shrink it back and take this?
And we also have, we have a big housing need, so, you know, I mean, that's that's-
Sure.
It doesn't make sense that we have 169 acres with surrounded by homes, flat and level, that we can't figure out a way to-
Or tens of thousands of acres that are under conservation.
Yes. Stacy, real quick, if you want to respond before I move on.
I think that's really an interesting idea, and I would love to learn more about it. So thank you for bringing that up.
My name is Tony Schinella, and you are watching, in this case, or listening, if you're on the radio, to the 2021 Ward Five debate with Mark Owen and Stacy Brown. Here's a couple of quick rapid-fire questions. I'll give each of you the chance to answer. Congress political systems with both the city council and the two school districts are very, they're not like any place else in the in the state. And they're also in some place that, some places in the country don't have an autonomous school districts. Some that's, some people like that, and it frustrates other people. I would like to ask about quick reaction to some reform questions. We'll start with you, Stacy. City is, the city of Concord is a strong city mayor system. Should this be changed to an administrator with a stronger mayor and council?
We have a strong mayor?
A strong city manager.
Okay.
Okay. Wait, could you rephrase that?
Sure. So the city of Concord has a strong city manager system. Should we change that to be a city administrator with a strong mayor and strong counselors versus what we have now?
I would like to look at both sides. I would like to see an example of where there is a strong mayor and-
So Manchester is an example.
Okay. You know, I would like to know a little bit more.
Mark?
Okay, I just, the history of Concord is well enough. The last time we had a strong mayor, it didn't go well. And-
Maybe it was the mayor.
It was the mayor. It didn't go well.
He wrote a book about it.
Yeah.
Oh.
And and what I've seen, again, since 1971, the government, this Concord city government works very well. Is it perfect? No. But I don't know of any other city in New Hampshire or New England that performs as well as the city does with an incredibly competent city manager. And that that's why it works, because you got a great city manager that hires the right people on all levels. And so absolutely, I would have no interest in going back, because there's not a problem.
Mark, we'll stay with you, and then we'll go to Stacy. Being a city councillor is considered by some to be a thankless job. Should they be paid, if yes, how much?
Well, I thought we were getting-
Well, more than what you are now.
Oh, okay. The $50,000 a year, you mean, that we're getting?
Or 25?
Or $1,000?
Or more than $1,000?
You know, I don't, sometimes we look at-
It's a half a penny an hour, I think, right, Mark?
Yes. And but what it is, it gets back to what I've seen in Concord since I've been here. This is a city and a community of activists, citizens, volunteers, and appreciate the the stipend of the $1,000 a year. But it's, I think the city runs very, very well without having paid councillor or politicians getting in and running the government. I mean, again, this city is being run very, very well.
I think that's an interesting question, because we're seeing it in Congress, where they're talking about, you know, it's really the privileged few that can afford to be a city councillor. So you are, you're limiting the people that are at the table to those that can't afford to sit and spend hours and hours talking to people, because that's what I'm excited about doing. I'm excited about spending time getting into the weeds on this. But I also have, my husband has a job where I can do that. So I think we are limited in some ways, and I would be willing to explore that.
While there, and Stacy will go with you this time, while there would be structural changes that would need to be made, I'm gonna ask you magic wand wave here, should the city council in Concord have oversight of the Concord School budget?
Ooh. I, you know, that's a question that's gonna be up for the the school, the charter commission.
So you don't, but-
Uh, hmm. You know, I would lean towards yes, because I'm seeing that there, you know, the school board, you know, has a lot of influence that the council doesn't weigh in on. But my my view is very limited, so I don't want to make that a definitive answer.
Thank you.
So all the years I've been here, it's about every eight or 10 or 12 years, there's a vote from the citizens of Concord to do exactly that, have the city council have the financial responsibilities of the school, and it's always voted down. The citizens in Concord, every time, they want them autonomous. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but it's the way that the citizens want the difference. I mean, they they want it separated. And we do have, the city council does have a joint committee from councillors and and the school board meet every other month and stuff like that. But no, I'm sure there's a lot of people, maybe myself included, would say, I'd like to have more influence on it. The big thing is, the, I'm gonna say 80% of the people in Concord really don't understand that the city council does not control the budget for the schools. The school does. And so instead of calling Stacy and me complaining about the budget, saying, you gotta call your school board member or go to the meeting, and they don't. That, you know, it's easier to call us, and we can't do anything about it.
I want to shout out a woman by the name of Carissa Coro, I believe is how you pronounce her last name. She's the owner of Educating for Good, and she recently made a compelling case that the Merrimack Valley School District, which is where most Pennacook and a few Ward Two, Ward Three residents go to school, should be merged with the Concord School District. This, of course, would, again, you'd have to have a whole lot of things line up. But it would solve a number of problems, including Pennacook's property bill, which is much higher than the rest of the city, as well as it would really put into question whether or not we needed an $80 million new middle school, because we would be able to move some of the students from the northern part of the city into the middle school at Merrimack Valley, as well as other things. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it's very interesting. You know, I think that they do not have Merrimack Valley School District. It doesn't really have representation on the city council. And I think, yes, that's something that I would, or I would like to see more information on that. I think we should consider it.
Well, Brett Todd is a city councillor from Ward One, and he represents-
Does he have children involved in the school, in the school system?
I think he does have kids in the-
Yeah. But 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 what it is, it's, I don't think it matters if you have a kid in school or not. But people that live in Pennacook or Concord have representatives on the city council, and that's Brett Todd. The problem, and I I think I've looked at this for years and saying, it doesn't make sense. We've got two little schools neck, you know, a few blocks away and everything else. But what you're talking about is turf, and you're talking about Boskewin and Andover and Loudon and Salisbury. And it's their identity in their high school, even though it's in Concord, it's there. So and I've tried for years to figure out how, historically, how that happened, that they're different. It makes, to me, it makes sense in that the people from Boskewin, the other Merrimack Valley students could be, you know, charged like we do with other schools that come into our-
They could be merged with other districts, and I know some parents want, they also have a town meeting form of government.
But they also got a, they got a high school football team, and they got all this other stuff. So it's, it's, maybe it'll happen someday.
Mark, stay with you real quick. One more reform question, and in keeping with the schools, even though you're city councillor, but if you're elected, you may, you may have to deal with this, because there's gonna be a whole divergence of of issues that come up that that reflect the charter commission, the, which they are gonna go through a 10-year review. Is it time for a city charter review, in your mind?
I, you know, I'm neutral about it. If they want to, that's fine.
Meaning Concord, the city of Concord?
Yeah, the city of Concord, but, you know, I don't see why we need it, but if people, the citizens would like to do it and do it, that's okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would- Yeah, I would, yep.
I have a couple of more questions, and then we're going to let you have your two-minute statements. There has been a lot of concern about not only the mental health issue, homelessness and crime, and it seems to be, at least from, not to make an editorial statement, but it seems like the city's been unraveling for at least eight years, nine years now, especially with the heroin and fentanyl issue, and now we've had, we had meth come in as well. At the same time, the state is going to spend over a billion dollars on mental health and housing services for a number of people. We're throwing money at it, and yet it still seems to get worse. What, Stacy, do you think that you can do as a Ward city councillor representing Ward 5, but also the entire city, to improve not only the lives of the people who are homeless, but the people who are crime victims and others who have to deal with the chaos that's going on in the city?
So while I've been knocking doors campaigning, I happened to talk to Tricia Wentworth, who is in my ward, and her husband, Mark Fagan, is on the Coalition for Homeless. And, you know, her take was that there are separate groups, that three separate groups that are dealing with the homeless population, and they're not communicating. Or I feel like the city, and I would be very good at this, connecting those groups, working with them so that they're working from the same list of people where, you know, somebody will say, you know, one homeless person might describe their condition to one group, but another group isn't aware of it. So just, you know, we're all on the same page. I think that's really important communication. And when I was in the military, in military intelligence and an intelligence officer, that's what I did. I found the information and disseminated it to the people that needed it.
You know, what's amazing to me is that the homeless issue is, I see it in Concord, I saw it start in 2008 with a lady and her two children in a car that we put up, the city put up. Everywhere in the United States, there's a homeless issue. Everywhere. I'm stunned. I mean, small cities or small towns in Nevada, Iowa, everywhere. Then I'm saying, my God, it's worldwide. It's, talk about a pandemic. That's where, that's where it's at. And throwing more money, it's becoming a huge multinational industry of millions and millions of dollars being poured in, but I don't see the needle moving much with this. And so what you're talking about, I think, is an example of you have different areas of people and organizations funneling money, trying to help. You know, one thing I thought about a couple of years ago was we'd have homeless, we have homeless people coming into Concord from outside the Concord area. And I'm going, wouldn't it, doesn't it make sense if this was more handled on a county issue where the counties are providing funding to small towns and communities outside of Concord to, so that the residents can stay and not have to come to Concord for their needs and wants to do it that way? So that's one thought. And the other thing about the county does very, very well. It does incredible, great job of housing people at the nursing home, for instance. The county home is a magnificent place, and on the flip side, they got the county prison, jail there. But, but they certainly do a great job doing that. But I would propose going up to that one more level, the county level, and look at it.
I want to stick with one last, well, one last question, and it's kind of a needs-and-wants question. You know, the baseball press box at Memorial Field is once again under repair. There have been other issues with recreational spaces in the city, including competition between taxpayers and association and student teams, access to fields. The city is committed to building a multimillion-dollar turf field at Terrell Park, which is, can only be used for lacrosse and football, while there are also other rec needs. Should the city be undergoing a complete needs and benefits assessment of all the rec spaces? Why or why not, Mark?
Well, I would defer that, and I'm sure they've done that, to the Parks and Rec Committee that the city has, and I don't know if they've already-
They have not done that, but-
Nope. I'm on that committee. Well, not comprehensive, the way Tony is suggesting.
But that's, for me, that's, that's one way of doing it. I mean, the big issue for me is senior softball with adult playing softball, and they have the opportunity to play in fields throughout Concord.
I'm the commissioner.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that. But, yeah, and that's, that's, again, getting back to what Concord is and what makes it so livable, is that those are, those are major issues that a lot of citizens feel that it's important for the outdoor recreation. And there's a huge amount of people that, that fight for that. They want that done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, but I think interests change. You know, on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we're seeing a lot of people are really into pickleball. And I have yet to see a pickleball game, but, you know, we're, they're, the city is changing some tennis courts to accommodate pickleball players.
It's fun to watch at the rec center, actually.
Okay, I will watch.
I don't want to close you down, but we're right up against the clock, and I want to both give you two minutes.
Okay.
And, Mark, we're going to let you go first this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Again, my name is Mark Cohen. I live at 2 Thayer Pond Road in Ward 5, and I'm running for the city council seat, Ward 5. The issue, we talked tonight about a lot of citywide issues, but really for Ward 5, what we have, we have a community in Ward 5 that's about, you can go from homes that are 200 years old to homes that have just been built recently. It goes to a heavily urban area to a suburban area. And the number-one topic I keep on hearing year after year, and we try to modify it and everything else, is it has to do with parking and cut-through traffic. It's, it's still a major issue for the residents, and the advantage I have, if you want to call it that, is I chaired the parking committee for several years, and we implemented a lot of changes in parking, especially in the downtown urban areas, where it's still modifying, or we're not. The committee's modifying it. But I would really work very hard to, again, revisit, as an example, the bottleneck at Auburn Street and Center Street for traffic and causing cut-through traffic. The other thing is we have three major institutions in Ward 5. We have the hospital, we have the Concord School District, and we have St. Paul's School. And to be working in conjunction with them for any future projects they may have and how it can tie in to the city, I think that's, that's very important. The other one is that it's called Leaf Protect, uh, Leaf Protection, yeah, protect the leaves. It's leaf pickup every year. I mean, that's a hot topic in, in Ward 5. Last, I want to salute here to the city of Concord. I'm drinking the city's water here. And we have the best water in New England through our service, and that started 40, 50 years ago. And it's our, our infrastructure in the city which makes it strong. That's why we retained a major company that's moving its facility into Concord, Pitco Fry later, employing 400 people, new jobs and everything. So, anyway, I'm Mark Cohen, Ward 5. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Brown. I'm also in Ward 5. I'm new to the political scene, and I have, this is a very short campaign season, but I'm trying to get out and talk to as many Ward 5 residents and city officials as I can because I learn more when I talk to people. And I appreciate the comments and the conversations that we've had. They've enlightened me already. But what I'm finding when I talk to people in Ward 5 is that people really do care about safe roads, and they care about addressing the climate crisis on the local level. And what I would do as a city councillor is I would really promote those things that we can. For example, I think Concord should join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. I think we should put charging stations for electric vehicles. I just found out we could put them in the lamp posts on Main Street. There would be slow chargers, which would give people plenty of time to shop and eat in our downtown. We need to replace the tree cover. If you have had lunch or you've walked on Main Street, there's no trees. It's too hot. We need to be investing in the green infrastructure of Concord. So those are some of the things that I would be promoting and pushing, and also solar panels on municipal spaces. These are the things that I'm hearing from Ward 5 residents that they care about, and I'm looking forward to learning more. My name is Stacy Brown, and thank you.
Well, thank you both.